Welcome to our board meeting. Actually, this is not our board meeting yet. This is a public meeting. We are using the only working microphone in the room so that we can livestream, so that we can be as transparent as possible as we can in this process. So I would like to call to order our public hearing, and this public hearing is about our budget and our truth in taxation. So we're going to save our meeting activities for when we call our board meeting to order. So I think we'll start with Mr. Thompson. We'll come down and introduce, and we'll hear from Mr. Alexander. Board, any questions you ask? Well, actually, you won't be asking any questions during the public hearing. We will talk about all of those during our action items. So we are watching this presentation in the future during our meeting. Any questions will be repeated by this person, whoever's down here, so that we can come back and forth. So, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, President Richardson. Well, I get to watch myself on TV, too. This is great. So this evening, we're going to be in what is traditionally the process of our budget. In June, you received what we refer to kind of as our draft budget, or what becomes the proposed budget. So in essence, we bring to you our first thoughts of what we know about the budget. At the time that we brought that information, we did not have a state budget, and we did not have a K-12 education budget through the state at that point. So we made assumptions on what we thought was kind of the most reasonable expectation of what might happen in the budget. Very pleased to stand before you this evening and say our very conservative estimates were very much wrong, and there has been a development in between the proposed budget and the budget you're contemplating this evening for action. So we are here this evening to present to the public both the changes to that budget and to talk about what that means for the tax rate for the district. So I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Ken Alexander, to present the information.
Thank you, President Richardson, members of the board. I know Scott took a lot of the good stuff there, but typically, this time of year, it would be just repeating what I said three weeks ago, but this is not a normal year. So let's see if this is going to come up. There we go. So as Scott mentioned, lots of things happened from the last time I was here, three weeks ago. So right now, we're on that bullet number two, having the public hearing to adopt the budget. So as part of the legislature, when they adopted the state budget and came out with the new school funding amounts, they had a one-time provision that said that school districts could take what was proposed, for our case, three weeks ago, and make changes to that. And if we wanted to do that, we could. And then we would just have to highlight what those changes were when we came back to you for this hearing and part of the adoption process. Since the legislature did that, the Auditor General was then able to issue the new forms with the new rates on it. So with that, we were able to use those. So the budget that's being presented to you today is on the new forms with the new rates. So the good thing with that cross-out there is we won't have to come back to you on September 15th with a revision. So we've taken everything that's been changed in the last three weeks and brought into this one document. So here are some of the highlights. The first two bullets are the exact same thing from three weeks ago. The big one is the third bullet there, the final base level amount. What I presented there is information of what that base level amount was to end fiscal year '22, what we estimated it to be three weeks ago in June, and then what actually was part of this adopted package that the legislature approved. So we estimated about $88 increase per student. It ended up being $384 per student increase. So about $300 more than what we estimated three weeks ago. So that's great. The transportation support levels, our estimate was, came true to life. So those are the correct numbers. So other things that happened as part of that legislature and our budget, they repealed a 1.25% base level funding increase for additional teacher compensation. I think part of that repeal was made up in having the large base increase. But this is something that we participate in some teacher compensation or evaluation system through the State Board of Education. So we get this extra funding, as do almost all the districts in the state. I think it goes way back to 1986. So that was repealed. But there were a couple of things that were added as well, some special education group B weights for those disabilities listed there, basically tripled, and that was, those categories had a large percentage of our special education students in them. They also added a group B weight for free and reduced lunch program students, added a rate. So between those two, 6.8 million increase and a 2.3 million increase. So those are the highlights of what generated our increase to our MNO budget. Also, district additional assistance increased. This is the first time in 20-plus years that those per-student numbers increased, 11.4%. I listed there sort of what they were previously, the weights, and what they went to now. So the end result is $3 million of DAA increase funds going into this year. So this slide, I'm trying to, this is a new slide. I'm trying to provide some information on funding limits that takes out the carry-forward amount. We talked previous times about carry-forward, how that fluctuates many times from year to year. It's also an estimate, since we're trying to wrap things up. But excluding those things, I listed what our funding level was for May for 2022, and then what we proposed in June, and then July. So you can see from 443 to 451, three weeks ago, to now 483. So a huge increase. And the DAA, it also shows that $3 million increase. So this is a slide that we had three weeks ago. I added an adopted column. That's what we're trying to do here, is asking the board to adopt this budget. So you can see the differences for MNO and DAA, 32.6 million, and the 3 million for the DAA. Again, this slide now includes the carry-forwards, which shows what our budget limits are. These are budgeting up to the limits authorized by the legislature and our voters. Those other funds, all were the same. They weren't affected by anything the budget happened. This is the exact same slide as last time, showing the highlights of what we presented three weeks ago. I know the superintendency, everyone, Governing Board worked hard, especially on the pay increases, Justin's group, everyone to come up with roughly $36 million in MNO, ESER Classroom Site Fund pay increases. So those are still in effect as of right now, and we will have some extra money, and we'll talk about that in a little bit coming up. Everything else there has stayed the same. This has also stayed the same. Parking lot improvements, 5.2 million. At these 12 sites of that 5.2 million, we're going to levy 2.9 million in adjacent ways for the bus and fire lanes. Since our proposed budget, we did do a truth and taxation notice and had that published according to state law. And those amounts are on the far right, showing the property tax effects per that truth and taxation notice. Now to the tax rate. That's always an interesting one. Again, the key thing here is estimated. These are just what we are estimating to happen based upon all the things that have been happening with our bonds and override. Net asset value stayed exactly the same from what I presented last time, a 4.5% increase from the previous year. In this tax rate table, I've added the fourth column there, the adopted July 2022 budget number. So you can see the primary rate stayed exactly the same. Secondary tax rate increased a little bit from what I presented here three weeks ago, which then, in effect, increased the total tax rate. The main reason for that increase from three weeks ago is related to the MNO override. As we were given more funding in the base support level, it then correspondently increased our MNO override levy amount, which then increased the secondary rate. So as you remember, last time, the secondary rate went up a little bit over the previous year due to the bonding, and we had a large bond sale, and also the MNO this time. So I want to just tell you that the, both of those factors, both the bond and the MNO, those applicable tax rate that we're estimating for this year for both of those are still below what the board had authorized to go to the voters, and the voters ultimately approved. So we're still within the parameters of what was previously authorized. So in effect, 7.129 tax rate estimated going for this year. This next slide is the same one I presented last time. It'll show that it's a little bit higher than last year, but overall, it's lower than seven of the last 10 years. So we're still pretty consistent as far as what our overall tax rate is, and especially over the last 10 years, we're a little bit lower. So literally, the million-dollar question, or millions-of-dollar question is, what are we going to do with such a large budget increase this late in the year, and what's next? So I know we had a lot of work going into what we were doing with our estimated increase earlier this year. So we're going to be doing the same thing, continuing to evaluate the changes and how they may impact the budget. We had some special ed monies coming in, increases, so that might be something we'll be looking at. As you all know, our budget is highly tied up in salaries and benefits and staff. So that is something we'll be looking at. And I think we told the associations, we would reengage them if there wasn't an increase more than what we had thought. Other things that are interesting is ESER, you know, we're slowly getting towards where we're going to start on the downhill of the ESER, and there's a lot of good things we're doing, and we want to keep some of those things. So we need to start planning for how we're going to incorporate those back into our budget. And the last thing is the aggregate expenditure limitation. Most of you probably remember, last year, the legislature approved us to exceed that statewide. With this increase in funding, we're going to go over that again this year. So we'll need some legislative action, hopefully in a special session, to allow us to spend the money they gave to us to spend, in essence. So.
So we wanted to end the presentation, Madam President, with a thank you to our legislators. I hope that you and the community can reflect on those names, and please thank them for this action. It is unprecedented. It is historical in the amount of increase of K-12 funding in Arizona. And with that, unless there are any requests for public comment, then we will move to that, and then we can close out our public comment.
Thank you for that presentation. We do have one request to speak during this public hearing, and it's Mrs. Rachel Walden. Mrs. Walden, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to talk about the budget. We know that we have a record budget this year. Our state legislature took us from a $5 billion surplus to a $5 billion deficit, and we're seeing record money for the district. Mesa now has a per-people average that's higher than the national average. But what we really need to be looking at is funding classrooms and not funding administration. So numbers show that since 2000, we've seen an 88% increase in administrative staff, a 37% increase in principals and assistant principals, and only an 8% increase in students. And then for the specific districts, staffing levels have rose for administrative roles, 48% in three years, but teachers only up by 1%. So I recommend that there be an evaluation of the efficiencies of these administrative roles, and why so much of this funding is going to what could be systems and programs, but not getting to the classroom after-school study sessions, for example, would be something that would really help our students. I know that the district did provide some funding for tutoring, but it's online only. A lot of the parents are really looking for something that is in-person and hands-on, and some resources for teachers in the classroom. I'm an efficiency expert from my experience in corporate America, so this is something that I do look at, and it could be something that you're doing behind the scenes. You're looking at this efficiencies and administration, but if there's a way that you could make it more transparent, so we can have a look, too, and maybe offer suggestions, that would be awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Walden. We appreciate that. So do I have motions to adjourn public meetings, public hearings, or do I just close them?
Just close.
I don't adjourn act?
It's just open and close.
Okay. Then we close this public hearing, and now we moved to another public hearing. This public hearing, I will move my agenda. This one is on seat time flexibility. So I now call to order a second public hearing on seat time flexibility, and Dr. Tracy Eastless will come and take the microphone for us here, and a presentation by Mrs. Jennifer Echols.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the governing board. As you will recall, back in the 2021 legislative session, House Bill 2862 was passed and signed by our governor, which allows a school district to provide or adopt an instructional time model, which will give some flexibility to students to meet their learning competencies in alternative kinds of pathways, remote instruction, different pathways such as project-based learning, mastery-based learning, and so forth. So a couple of months ago, we brought to you our first public hearing to talk about the instructional time model that we are looking to adopt for the next school year. And we have Jennifer Echols here tonight as a part of the second hearing to provide some more information based on the feedback that we received from that last hearing. So Jennifer Echols, Teaching and Learning Director, Secondary Education.
President Richardson, members of the board, thank you for having me here this evening. And how do I get my slideshow to show? It'll come up automatically? Okay, good, because that's how I know what I'm going to say. So as Dr. Eastless mentioned, we were in front of you, I think it was in April, with our first public hearing, talking about the plans that our school leaders had been thinking about so far in terms of seat time flexibility. And then we had some more time with our principals in Leadership Academy early in June. And after that, thank you, after that, Leadership Academy, each of the schools who planned to exercise seat time flexibility submitted a plan that allowed us to put more details into the instructional time model that I'm going to share with you this evening. And based on those plans, it does look like we'll need to resubmit after you approve it for this upcoming school year. Just as a reminder, when we talk about seat time flexibility, we're really thinking about this in terms of three pathways, an on-campus, a hybrid, and an off-campus pathway. Most of our schools are really leaning towards doing things that are on-campus for this upcoming school year. The hybrid pathway is something that involves learning experiences that are happening both in and outside of school. And then obviously, the off-campus pathway, students are bringing in learning experiences that are happening outside of the school day and earning credit for that. When we looked at the plans that our schools submitted, you can see this is how the schools are thinking about exercising seat time flexibility for the upcoming school year. Obviously, we know last year, we used seat time flexibility for the formation of Mesa Virtual Campus, and that will continue. And so all of our schools will be connected to that in some way. And then that hybrid pathway, we have an opportunity to think about our students who are struggling with a chronic illness and miss a lot of school, to use some seat time flexibility so that we can keep them on track and that they don't have to miss out on any opportunities. So the instructional time model that we submit to the state really asks us to explain what instruction will look like and how we will collect attendance in each of those different pathways. So when we're thinking about the on-campus pathway, what we've asked of our schools, our administrators, and our teachers is to make sure that they've clearly delineated the learning outcomes that are connected to state academic standards that are going to be demonstrated in the things that they're doing on their campuses. And so that will happen through a syllabus, so that they've really thought about that in advance, and that they've shared that information with the students and their parents. And then attendance in those on-campus pathways will be measured with a combination of the time that they are spending in class and also with some project completion and achievement. And we're going to store all of those artifacts in campus, so in case there's an audit or we're asked to produce the evidence, then we could supply that evidence. When we think about the hybrid pathway right now, the way that schools are thinking about this is that kids will be on campus some days each week, and then learning asynchronously off-campus on other days. And so the days that students are attending school on campus, of course, we would take attendance, just like we normally do. But those off-campus learning days, attendance would be taken retroactively, say, at the end of the week, looking at evidence of learning in the learning management system. So it might be some participation logs. It could also be based on completion of coursework to satisfy competencies. And then for those off-campus pathways, right now, this is really looking like schools are going to be thinking about this in terms of some kind of virtual instruction. And so we would be having students engage either in synchronous or asynchronous instruction. If, for Mesa Virtual Campus, for example, if they are engaging in that synchronous virtual instruction, those teachers are taking attendance, just like they are if the students are on campus during the school day. For the asynchronous instruction, again, attendance being taken retroactively based on evidence of learning or participation in the learning management system. So that's how we're thinking about collecting that evidence. We've collaborated with our folks in synergy, with our audit team, because we're really wanting to make sure that we've got the documentation in place, so that we will, we're adhering to the law, and that we will have a good outcome in case of an audit, which will happen. And if you approve this model, or the instructional time model this evening, then the next step would be that I would submit that documentation to the state, and then we would just be monitoring how that's working throughout the school year. And I don't think there's any questions during this, right? Or they don't ask questions during a public hearing? No? Okay. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eastless, and Zechols. We appreciate that. And I, we will close this meeting. So this public hearing is over. I have no requests from the public to speak. We will now move into our regular meeting. Let me catch up my screen to what that is. In accordance with governing board policy in public participation at board meetings, please stand for a moment of silence. of allegiance tonight will be led by Dr. Randy Malerwein.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I am not sure if our, does the video work on our governing board procedures? No, the video does not work. Okay, we will skip that part of our agenda. If there's, we'll let you know how they work. If you guys have a question, you can ask us. But we do have a review of our agenda, which I have not, which normally refers to the consent, and I have not heard from any board members, if they would like to pull any consent agenda item. Okay, then we will move on to item E, which is a review of our governing board calendar. Dr. Forliss, come join us at the only microphone.
And you all laugh at my old-school paper, but here we go for the review of the governing board calendar. Before we get started, I want to highlight that our Martha is so good at keeping us on track, that she has identified that we have a governing board meeting scheduled on March 14th. It'll be much cooler then, thank goodness, but on March 14th, and that is during spring break. So I would like to propose that we move that meeting to March 7th or the 21st, and then it would be similar to what we did this month in July, that we would have two back-to-back meetings. So we'll have to take a look at calendars to see what works, and I'll loop back with all of you, but I just wanted to make sure that you were looking ahead, that we will have a bit of a calendar problem with a governing board meeting being scheduled during spring break. So next week, when we check in, I'll check calendars with you. So July 26th is our next governing board meeting. It will be right here at 5:00 p.m. August 4th is our first day of school. Today, we had our general administrator meeting, the big kickoff. August 4th is front and center, and all of our minds getting ready for our children on that very special day. Our first governing board meeting during the new school year is on August 9th at 6:30. That's when we will go back to our regular start time. August 23rd, 5:00, we will have a study session, and that is an opportunity for the board to receive training on superintendent contract development, and then starting our governing board meeting, the regular meeting at 6:30 on the 23rd. September 7th and 9th is the ASBA Law Conference. It is at the JW Marriott Scottsdale Camelback Inn Resort, and the registration closes on August 26th. So if you would like to attend, please let Martha know that, so that she can get you registered. September 7th is the pre-conference. The 8th is the actual law conference, and then the 9th is, again, the second day of that law conference. And then September 10th, the ASBA Delegate Assembly is again at the JW Marriott Scottsdale Camelback Inn. Board Member Mrs. Kiana Sears is our delegate, and Mrs. Marcy Hutchinson is our alternate, should we need an alternate on that day. I'll give you a quick forecast into September. September 13th, 6:30, regular governing board meeting. And then September 27th, 5:00, is an executive session to collect the board interests regarding compensation and benefits for meet and confer. Now that we have this new budget that has come to us, we might need to move that date, because I believe that the board will have interest in compensation and want to perhaps look at an executive session earlier. And then we will have our regularly scheduled board meeting at 6:30, and again, that is on September 27th. So that is, time goes quickly when you look at it that way. Mrs. Richardson.
Thank you. Nowhere does time move faster than on our governing board calendar updates.
Nowhere does time move faster than on our governing board calendar updates. The next item on our agenda is consent items. All items will be considered and considered as a group and will approved with one motion. There's no request to speak on those by any public, by any member of the public, so those will continue to be as a group. Do I have a motion to approve consent? Mrs. Hutchinson makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. All right. Mrs. Head will call for our vote. Mrs. Sears has a vocal voice vote. Touchy computers. Looks like, I can't see. I think that passed, I think it passed approved unanimously, five to zero. All right. And we are down to action items, which is our item five. We have personnel requests. Mr. Wing, join us at the microphone.
Good late afternoon, governing board. Tonight, Human Resources is asking that you approve our personnel action items, including our addendum. You'll notice just a bit over 400 pages, something we've chatted about a month or so ago in our summer retreat that we'll be addressing and making recommendations for in the future, but we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel requests, including the addendum? Thank you, Mrs. Ellingson, and a second. Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. Is there any conversation about that among board members? All right. Mrs. Head will call for our vote. Thank you, Mrs. Sears. And that is approved, I believe, five to zero as well. Who knew? I can't see from far away. Next in our action items is the adoption of the proposed budget. Oh, we do. So sorry, I skipped right over it. Thank you for helping us. Thank you for stopping me.
So, Madam President, members of the board, with your action this evening, you have, we have a brand-new administrator in our school district. We are welcoming Joseph Valdez as our Director of Communications and Engagement. You will know that this position was vacated by Heidi Hurst, and we are so excited to have Mr. Valdez joining us. So it is my pleasure to introduce Joseph and tell you a little bit about our new Director of Communications and Engagement. Joseph comes to us with more than 18 years of experience as a leader, project manager, and strategic planner of brand communications in the public and private sector. Most recently, he led strategic marketing and communications for the Center for the Future of Arizona. Prior to that, he was the Director of Communications and Community Affairs for the Arizona Commerce Authority. Earlier in his career, he served clients such as Science Foundation Arizona and Helios Education Foundation as a public relations supervisor at Lavage Agency. I hope I said that correctly. Lavage? Lavage. Okay, I got it. Joseph holds a Bachelor's of Arts degree in Public Affairs and Corporate Communications from Southern Methodist University and a Master's of Global Management and a certificate in Global Marketing from the Thunderbird School of Global Management at ASU. He will also probably tell you that he began his educational career right here in Mesa Public Schools in elementary and junior high school. So we are excited to welcome Joseph as the Director of Communications and Engagement. So if you'd like to come to the podium, we've got Mr. Hacker, who's going to take a quick picture. You can address the board, and they would like to congratulate you. So here we are. I'll get my old-school notebook out of here.
Hey, I'm with you.
Hey, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Forliss. I appreciate that. Thank you so much, President Richardson and the governing board members. I see some familiar faces in my work with the Center for the Future of Arizona and ASU. And those that I do not know, I look forward to knowing you deeper on a professional level. And Dr. Forliss was right. I am a former kid of elementary school here in Mesa Public Schools and junior high, Eisenhower Elementary, 4th through 6th grade. In 7th grade, I went to Keno Junior High. So it's kind of a full-circle journey for me. And, you know, I was at the annual kickoff meeting this morning, and I heard Dr. Richardson talk a little bit about, or President Richardson talk a little bit about, talk a little bit about the honor of her life. And I think serving is one of the highest honors that you can achieve in this life. And serving children is really something that is near and dear to my heart. And so when I come to Mesa Public Schools to, you know, be part of the team, I see that you're doing so much great work already in terms of the promise and the portrait and the mission and the vision that's already been established. I hope to contribute more to that in terms of what my role I see as being. You know, I'm an outsider so far, but I'm sure that I'll internalize everything pretty quickly and contribute right away. And what I see me doing in the near term is really inspiring team purpose, is understanding our why and communicating that out and leading on a vision. And that's connected to the portrait of a graduate and serving the mission of Mesa Public Schools and living out the values in all the stakeholder engagements that we do have, whether it's with parents, kids, or our employees, which really builds our culture. And then to fortify that culture of excellence and celebrating our successes. I mean, we have so many great stories to tell, and I'm really good at doing that. I'm really good at collaborating with team members to make that happen. And then the one thing that I know that was really important was the strategic planning and creating the brand, the internal manifestation of what we believe is that culture, the external reflection of that is the brand. What do we stand for? And what we want other people to know Mesa Public Schools as, the gold standard of education excellence, I think is a good start when we're thinking about doing those exercises. So thank you so much for having me. I look forward to working with each of you on a deeper level. And I am 100%, 24 hours a day, open access to anybody on the board that wants to pick my brain about anything. Great? Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it. I hope you look with favor on my recommendation, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. That was, we should not have skipped over that. And Joseph, we will tell you what we tell everyone. You don't have to stay. You can go home. We don't feel bad. We feel a little bad, but you don't, you don't. You're more than welcome to stay. And you get gold brownie points for that, gold stars. The next action item is our adoption of the budget, proposed budget. We already had a presentation on that. This was our second presentation on it. So what we will do then is I will ask for a motion that we approve the recommended budget and a second, and then we will open it up for conversations and questions. Do I have a motion to approve the recommended fiscal year 2022-2023 budget? Thank you, Mrs. Sears, and a second. Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson. All right. Let's talk about questions, and maybe I'll be the repeater of the, okay. All right. Then I'm going to join you and sit back down and let Mr. Thompson take over.
So thank you, President Richardson. So we've had the presentation. We've had a lot of discussion. I don't think there's a lot that I can add to the conversation other than to say, as is pretty evident at this point, we really got this information late. We have, as we committed at the last board meeting, when I believe a board member asked us, what if we get more money? What are we going to do? So that last, second-to-last slide was trying to address that, yes, we have a lot of conversation to have, good conversation, important conversation. But as I've been trying to explain to everyone, we really only get one shot at getting this right because we're committing to typically staff, as we often talk, 95, or 85% to 89% of our budget is staffing. So as we think about what we're going to do next, we need to engage in a lot of conversation. And we did that in a very collaborative way last spring as we developed to where we are today. And so now we're going to have to reengage kind of that whole process again and get feedback from you, the governing board, from our staff, and certainly from superintendency and leadership so that we can really make the best decisions and bring back to you the best recommendations. As it stands right now, as Mr. Alexander indicated, the only recommendations that really exist in this budget are the ones that you've already contemplated and approved. So 4% increase for teachers, $1.25 for classified staff, all the ESER stipends, all those things are still there. But the additional funds that we've received now is where we're going to have to work and look at the compensation and other issues like ESER going away and all of those things. So that's where we're at. I think it'll be a good process, and I think it'll be good that it actually, I don't anticipate us really being able to, we're pretty focused on opening schools right now, and there's not a lot we can do between now and in the next two weeks to really influence where we're at, staffing-wise and supply-wise and all that. All that's already geared up. So the conversations will really, I think, start as school starts, and we'll be sharing that with the public and with yourselves as we go through that process. So that's our, kind of our intent of next steps. Other than that, if there's questions on the board, on the board.
Does that apply to, does that apply to this budget we're talking about right now?
That is correct. So what they did is actually some of the, repeat the question. Thank you, Madam President. So the question is, what, I'm sorry, restate the, it just slipped right out of my head as we started talking. Sorry. So the question was, Kiana? What was the? Okay. Thank you. So what happened? Yeah, I'm trying to frame the question. So the question is, this is not the typical process. How are we here? And why are we here? The legislature contemplated in passing the budget this late in the process that we could make changes between the proposed and the adopted budget. So the question is, do we have legislative authority to do, to bring to you the changes that we're bringing to you this evening? And the answer is yes. That information was brought to their attention, that school districts were probably in some process of budget adoption and proposal at the point that they were finalizing the budget, and they authorized. And we have the right to make a substantial change from the proposed budget to the adopted budget as we've presented. And as Mr. Alexander said to you, that's why we highlighted the change. And really, it's really those two things that were highlighted, the 32.6 million difference in the M&amp;O budget and the $3 million difference in the capital budget. That is what the legislature acted upon, and that is the big change from what was proposed to now.
So my question is, with that change, I know formally what we would be doing if we wanted to do something with this money, half-year, we would be making an adjustment. So now my question is, this, the considerations we talked about before, in an event that we have money, can we make that change and actually have it? And I understand it's a closed window. Either do retroactive pay, if it's in the form of pay, or will we have to wait till half-year?
We have, and Mr. Wing, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that our contracts contemplate the ability for us to make a change and make it retroactive based on the fact that the school year has already started and we have received additional funds. So yes, we fully intend to address compensation in this process. How that works out is something we'll work with our meet and confer teams on that.
So question yet comment. We talked about the 1%, of course. We also talked about the 2% when it comes to the teacher's salary. We talked about the 1% being, the word escaped me, temporary. That's why I left my brain. Okay, temporarily, but we know there was an ask for it to be permanent. And we also talked about that was unrealistic to do the 2%. So those are considerations that I would like us to consider. And then going forward, looking at all the areas in which we need to address salary, the salary schedule. I do know we have another conversation going forward, but as we talk about this budget, this budget is the 2223, what we're going into. And we've done some things to have salary done, in my opinion, for different areas. But I think this gives us an opportunity to do some necessary things when it comes to salary adjustments and places where we have disparity.
Thank you, Madam President, Member Sears. I think it's important to note that in the compensation memo that Mr. Wing provided, the certified staff did receive compensation in the equivalence of 5%. As you indicated, only 1% of that was temporary and absolutely a conversation around the permanency of that, additional amounts to that. All of that is on the table. All of that will be contemplated. But we first need to establish the limits that we're working with. That's what we'll be doing this evening if you are so willing to approve this budget. And from that conversation, from that approval, we will then have the dollar amounts established to then have those conversations with our negotiation teams in meet and confer.
Okay. I have a comment and then maybe a request rather than a question. We know that this is one of the strongest labor markets we've seen in decades. And I guess, Mr. Wing, I'm really, you know, laser focusing on you at this time. In order to serve our children, we have to have the best professionals in the classroom. In order to serve our children, we have to have the best professionals in the classroom with them. And that includes our classified staff, as well as our certified staff. One of the issues that keeps me up at night is vacancies, and making sure that our children are served by the best people possible. But we have to have employees. So, one of the things that I would like us to look at really quickly, and I guess I'm requesting more information on. I know we're having issues finding special ed classified staff, that we've got some salary schedule gaps, that maybe we need to look at benefits. But I need advice from the professionals in the room, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Wing, and maybe we can meet before the next board meeting. What would be your professional recommendations on what we should be doing? I've heard things from parents, I've heard things from teachers, classified staff, over the summer, largely because I've been in some schools this summer. And people are worried, and I know you're worried as well, Mr. Wing. So, I'm hoping that you'll be able to provide us with some information, as well as some professional advice, on making sure that that money is in our classrooms with the best people in front of our kids, because we know it's the people that make the difference in the instruction.
It's a wellness campaign.
Yeah, really.
Get your steps in.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. I think I have a list of about twenty-five items that we can use for this money, and I'm sure everybody else has twenty-five items. Some of that does include the special ed classified folks, different benefits, things like that. It needs to be restated, this is unprecedented, getting this large of a budget increase, larger than I can recall in my twenty-six years. And it happened recent, we weren't planning for it, so I don't think, I don't want to cut Mr. Alexander short. I think he budgeted appropriately. It just was, came up to us most recent, but it does provide a lot of opportunities, opportunities we could not have done in education, even as recently. So, everything's on the table, we do intend to have meet-and-confer teams meet at some point, looking at salaries and things like that, but there's other factors to consider that was shared in the slideshow about ESER going away. Do we want to retain some of the great things we're doing with it, things like that as well? So, it's not a simple, it's not as simple as the twenty percent in three years, and we knew where it was targeted, this has more opportunities. But what you indicated and what Ms. Sears indicated is certainly some of them.
I would like to add as well, that we did end those slides too with, please understand that with all the great news, and I don't want to be the wet blanket, but we do have the AEL expenditure limit still hanging out there. There's talk of a special session, we certainly encourage that to occur. Why is that super significant? Well, we're going to have an election in November. So, the folks who supported and brought this budget forward in the legislature may or may not be in the future legislature. And so, it just puts, not that a future legislation group, legislative group wouldn't support us, but that we just makes more uncertainty for us. So, we'd like to have some certainty, we can actually spend the dollars that we have available to us. So, we have that to deal with on top of having these discussions.
I think that an important thing to consider is that, so tonight, what the motion on the table is, is to approve this amended budget that does have some extra room. How that extra money is being spent is not being decided here tonight. And so, I think we all have lots of things we want to weigh in on about where we think that should go, and how that should come, and we will have ample opportunity as a board to weigh in on where we want the, how we would like to utilize that budget. This, tonight, is just approving the umbrella, so that for the coming year, we can get our budget, we can start paying people, we can have a budget that's ready to go. So, in that, in that vein, if we have more comments that are around, maybe what we want to, how we want to spend that budget, I would suggest that maybe we hold those, and we'll have a study session where we talk about how we want to spend that money, and we certainly will have lots of opportunity to do that.
Simple question.
Yes, Mrs. Sears. Yeah, yeah.
So, a simple question.
Simple question.
The budget before us.
The budget before us?
Includes that additional money.
Includes that additional money. Correct. That's the, that's what's being proposed, is that it's, looks a little different than the first hearing we had in June. This is the second hearing, it includes that additional money. It does not earmark that money in any direction yet.
And a simple follow-up.
A simple follow-up, Dr. O'Reilly?
So, no one would say to us, when you voted for the budget, you approved all of these things that are in, that the money is going to be spent on. We're just doing as God said, the limits. Here's how much we can spend, how we spend it is going to be further discussed.
Dr. O'Reilly wants to clarify that this is a budget that's approving an umbrella budget, not a line item on where these monies will be spent, and that will be part of future conversations. Did I restate that correctly? Okay, that's, that is correct, correct?
With the exception of the things already agreed to.
With the exception of the things we've already said yes to. It's not the future money, so that, we have said yes to some things already. Goes through in those budget items.
Can I have a question on the actual content of this?
Well, then you come down for that part. You got, you got more, you got to come down.
So, my question is, and I talked to Dr. Forlis and said, I want to see, tell me what's different from last year, last month, really, to now. And one of the things that I mentioned to Ken earlier, I was going to ask this, is the contracts. So, we are adding six-hundred-and-sixty-four contracts, and for certificated staff. So, that could be in a lot of areas, those could be specialists, coaches, teachers, administrators. So, I'd like to understand what, what, who are those people, what are those contracts for? And I don't know if Ken's the best person to answer that, or someone else is.
Well, the term contract versus the term position is different. So, when we made the change from our phased retirement program to be a one-year program versus ongoing, those individuals were rehired back as Mesa Public Schools. And so, they received a contract with Mesa Public Schools, and we're talking close to three hundred contracts, but they're not new positions, they're just a new status. So, some of it, some of it's about status.
Yeah, my question is, how many FTEs we had last year? Certified staff FTEs? And I don't have the number in front of me. And this year, how many do we have? And it went up six-sixty-four. So, I'm just asking, sixty-four from last month, that's what's in the document? That seems odd to me, and most of them are not at one thousand. So, most of them are not classroom ones. So, my question is, is that a error? Is that, are we adding something? Is there something I don't understand?
Dr. O'Reilly, I think, so, when you're referring to the six-sixty, you're referring to the personnel memo? Is that where?
Page three of your budget document, it says, how many FTE certificated staff did we have last year? How many do we have this year?
Okay.
So, that was my question.
So, Dr. O'Reilly, I ought to look into that, but there was not intended to be any change on the FTE number from the one two weeks ago. So, it was, we had to take these new forms and do, if you look at the forms, there's lots of information built throughout them, and basically regenerating them on the new form. So, there was no intention to revise or add positions from three weeks ago.
I think his question is, from last year to this year?
From last year to this year.
That there's six-hundred-and-sixty-four, so it's not in the last three weeks. It's from last year's budget, how many full-time positions we funded to this year's, three weeks ago.
So, the question related to that is, a lot of that is, how did you come up with that FTE number? This year, we're working with HR to come up with an FTE number, and that method to do so. So, that number is not really one that, most districts in the state look really closely at it. It's mostly on the budget limit and what is being spent in the various areas. So, it's not the end-all, be-all to what our FTEs are, actually. It's just an estimate of what those are. So, again, it could possibly be related to how those numbers were figured out last year versus how they were figured out this year.
So, we could get a, we'll, we can assume that there was no intent to increase really the number of teacher, the number of certificated, because most of those are certificated people, maybe not be teachers. And we'll get an update on that, we'll get a clarification on that, because if we're adding that many teachers, and I just, I just noticed it, I started looking to see what was different, I just want to make sure that there wasn't something big change that I wasn't aware of. So, I look forward to seeing an update on that.
Okay, I would like to publicly thank the legislature for giving us these extra funds. As I listened to many of their discussions and talked with several legislators, they said the main reason for giving this extra money was because of the scoring on the students of Arizona, and looking at how to help these students improve. And, and so, going forward, I know we're not talking about what we want the future budget money spent on, but I would like to, there's an urgency to, for us to discuss, because with the school year starting, we need to look at what our students really need quickly. So, I would like to ask that we can start discussing that in the next meeting or two, so that we can get the ball rolling, as the school year starts. There are several ideas that I have, and I would like to discuss that soon, so we can get the ball rolling and be great stewards of that extra money that we so, are so grateful to have. But it's truly our job to make sure we're being good stewards of that money and helping the students, because that's what the money's there for.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellingson, oh, Mrs. Sears, come on back.
So, I listened, and I did hear you loud and clear, that we're going to go back to the employee groups, but I think the concern of many of us on the board is that we have lengthy understanding of, I mean, like, not only discussion, but understanding what, what we are proving, what's going forward, what's happening, rather than being told, this is what the employee group said, and this is where we're going, and this is what is kind of reasonable and prudent, as you would say, in a legal way. I'm also just being very specific about, we know a certain amount of money that's included in this budget was actually given to areas where we're saying we actually need help. And so, with special ed, and all that, that we keep those things on the table, recognizing what the legislature intention is, when they're actually giving us this money, very much like Board Member Ellison was talking about, speaking to the need of our children, looking at our special ed, and the places where we're absolutely in crisis. And my other comment has to do with, I'm concerned about this employee group approach. I think it's really important that everyone have their groups, have their advocacy, have all of that. But areas that we know we have problems, areas that we know, well, challenges, that we need to address, is that we actually carve out that space. So, for example, if we know we have a problem in an area with salaries when it comes to, let's say, classified employees, that's supervisors. Let's actually look at that, rather than this group lump approach, and then everybody. And so, we address, and we add compensation to people who, that's not where the crack or the leak or the breathing is. So, I think the time needs to be abundant, that we actually go through this and not relegate our responsibility and our duty to make sure that we, one, discuss it, understand it, and do what, what we believe as the leaders of this district and the governing board, some of the things that we need to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears and Mrs. Ellingson. We appreciate those comments, and I would like our board to look at maybe a draft letter from our board to the legislator, thanking them for this increase in our budget and our ability to help. And Mrs. Sears, I understand and hear what you're saying, and agree with so much of it. And I, we can certainly confer with Mr. Wing on what approach he wants to, because certainly, there's not a time, there's not time to open up a whole new meet-and-confer process that took six months last time, right? We want to, it will be much more focused on addressing some of those concerns and things. So, that, maybe in our check-in with Dr. Forlis, we can, Mr. Wing and Dr. Forlis can figure out a plan for hearing or sharing what some of those targeted areas will be for us, so that we can make sure we're transparent in the way we talk about it, but also making sure that we can be prepared and know the right avenues to address and target. So, thank you.
Respectfully, President.
Yes.
I believe that we shouldn't do these one-offs, your concern, now my concern. Your concerns, you didn't, I didn't bring this up, because right now, that's super problematic.
Okay, so no, so you want to discuss it as a board together? Okay, yes, I think, I agree. I guess my, my point was figuring out the right way to, to tell Mr. Wing what the board's. So, we'll, we'll figure that out, we'll work on it, and see what they propose to us on how we can do that, so the board can weigh in, maybe even give direction to meet-and-confer, is what we're doing. We're not, we would like to give direction to meet-and-confer. This is what the board would like, meet-and-confer to consider as they go back to their groups. So, great, we'll get that on the agenda for the next meeting. We need that on there quickly. Okay, so, all of those things said, is our board ready to, for Mrs. Head to call for our vote on this proposed budget? All right, Mrs. Head, we have a motion on the table, it's been seconded. I believe that says that motion passed five to zero. The next action item is item five C, which is our instructional time model. We'll have Dr. Eastless come back down, but we'll follow that same process. We need a motion to approve the instructional time model to submit to the Arizona Department of Education. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I move that we adopt the instructional time model, that is being proposed.
Thank you very much, Dr. O'Reilly, and a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson, seconds. That will open it up for conversation from board members. Are there any questions or conversations for Mrs. Eastless or Mrs. Echols? Come on up. Any questions?
My only question is, Mesa High is in all three categories, are they doing more than most other schools? Are they doing more?
The question is that Mesa High is included in all models. We want to hear just a minute about why they're included in all three.
Yes, they're looking at dabbling in the three different pathways. I'll ask Mrs. Echols to come, as she's leading the instructional design team for that process, to give you some more detail.
There is a proposal for Mesa High to, it's called the Gold Academy, and they want to have all three pathways within that academy. And there's still some conversations to be had with Dr. Malinwine and Dr. Forlis, but what we wanted to do is include that in the instructional time model in the event that that is approved, moving forward, so that we have that in there. But still, some discussions around that academy are happening.
I'm just happy to see it, so I just wanted to.
Dr. O'Reilly says he's happy to see that. Are there any other questions from the board? Mrs. Hutchinson, do you want to come down to the mic, or do you want me to?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Echols, in my, in my reading this correctly, and I think it's evident in your presentation, that these are site-based plans.
Yes.
For instructional time.
Mrs. Hutchinson's question is, are these site-based plans?
And yes, each school is coming up with their own plan within the guardrails that the design team was meeting throughout the year, and suggested some guardrails that would make sure that we were doing the right thing for kids, and in compliance with the law. And, but each site devised their own plan based on those guardrails.
Okay, so that's, my follow-up question is, when you and I were with the student advisory group, you talked with them about this, and they emphasized that they needed guardrails.
Yes.
So, so, so every school is designing their plan, and their guardrails based on the students that they know. Is that correct?
That's correct. Sorry, so, Mrs. Hutchinson is asking about the guardrails that are in place, based on the community. But the guardrails, I would say.
But the guardrails, I would say, are more universal than that. There are things that we know that are right for teaching and learning. So, we want to make sure, for example, that all of our, any time we're awarding credit, that it's aligned to Arizona academic standards, that we have clearly defined outcomes that are expected in any learning experience, and that all of the stakeholders are aware of those intended outcomes. So, parents, students, teachers, administrators. And what will happen now is that our design team will meet again and review all of those plans and loop back out to schools for some suggestions or maybe to ask for more documentation. And then, once we've had all of those conversations, it will go to the district instructional leadership team for another round of vetting. So, we've got a lot of eyes on these plans to make sure that we're doing things the right way.
I really appreciate those assurances. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate the many eyes, because I think we just will have better options.
I agree.
I very much appreciate your presence. Thank you.
You're, you're very welcome. Mrs. Hutchinson appreciates the eyes. Mrs. Ellingson?
I also appreciate those assurances, because we've heard from the public that people are a little nervous that it's in lower standards and that kids will graduate and not really learn what they're supposed to learn. So, I appreciate hearing that there are guardrails and, and high standards. And, but I've also heard the opposite, that parents are happy because students going for CTE and technical education, they'll be able to double dip, and this will really help out those students, and they won't have to do things that are sometimes seem...
Maybe seem redundant a little bit. So, Mrs. Ellingson also appreciates the concern seems to be from the board that, and I think Mrs. Echols has provided that assurance, that this is still going to be rigorous, meet academic criteria in order to award credit. It won't just be like, oh, yeah, it looks like you did enough for that. So, we'll make sure that it is rigorous. Is that, did I restate that?
Yes. And one more comment, for love of all that is good, can we please put CBO2 in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade and allow same-time flexibility to that kids they need it earlier? And I'm tired of it in junior high.
The question was about changing how we're delivering CBO2, and we are working on it. We are, we've got another group that's meeting to talk about that framework. We have a proposal for how we can shift that. We know that we now have elementary students who've had one-to-one access, and so, that is in the works. We've got, we did a little bit with that at Mesa Virtual Campus last year. So, we've got a model, and we know what worked and what we need to adjust. So, yes, that is a work in process. It is an area of focus for us this year to have that mapped out.
Any other questions or comments? All good, all good things brought up. Okay, if you're ready, Mrs. Head will call for our vote on the instructional time model. That was our fastest vote ever, five to zero. That is approved. Good job, team. The next item on our agenda is adjournment. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Mrs. Ellingson motions to adjourn in a second. Oh, come on, a second to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. And do I have, and Mrs. Head will call for our vote. That vote also passes five to zero. We are adjourned.